...form that will apply to all private and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. And from looking at the list, it appears that all village board members are present, but we'll have our village clerk take role call.
Trustee Bob?
Here.
Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Kaminsky? I can see you.
See you.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Can you hear me?
I can now, thank you, thank you. Trustee Myers?
Dennis here.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Peeper?
Here.
Trustee Wing?
Here.
Trustee Zabel?
Here.
President Walter?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. This time I would ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Next item on the agenda would be President's Report. Just a couple of things to report tonight. First and foremost, I would like to welcome our two newly elected trustees to tonight's meeting. Representing District Number Three is Trustee Jolene Peeper and representing District Number Four is Trustee Phil Hudson. Congrats on your election win and welcome to the Germantown Village Board in your first meeting. If you have any questions or any concerns come up, you know, on any meeting that you are a committee member of or village board meeting or just have questions about operation of or procedural thereof, please feel free to reach out to me and give me a call or email me and I'll help you any way that I can. But again, congratulations on your election win and welcome to the village board. That's all I have for... You're welcome. That's all I have for President's Report tonight. So we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which would be the appointments. And we can start with the standing committees or however the board members would like to approve the appointments.
Dennis here, Roland Newell, number five, except entirely. I will second Dennis's approval of number, item five, A through...
B?
F. All the way through the polling places.
Okay, so A, I see, I've got A through E on my... Is that correct?
A through E, yes, yeah, correct.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made and seconded to approve all appointments as listed on tonight's agenda under Section Five Appointments, letters A through E. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? One last time, any other discussion on the motion to approve? Then we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers?
Yes, Dennis.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Kaminsky?
She said aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I take care of that item on the agenda. So we'll go to the next item, which is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest committee or department reports. And we'll start with committee reports and committee chairs. Trustee Zabel.
General government, that earlier tonight, and we will meet again on May 18th at 6:00 PM in the village boardroom.
Maybe. Thank you.
Oh, that's right, maybe in the village boardroom. Hopefully we're back to regular meetings.
Okay. That'll be your, your meeting.
Correct.
Thank you. We'll go to Public Works Chair, Trustee Kaminsky. Someone's up with your mic there.
I can, I can see that that meeting, Public Works, is on May 5th at 6 o'clock.
Also, the village boardroom.
In the village boardroom.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go to the Public Safety Chair, Trustee Rick Miller.
Yes, Public Safety, I believe, is May 4th at 6:00 PM in the village boardroom.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to announce for announcements and forthcoming events of public interest committee or department reports?
Mr. President, this is Steve Kreckel. If I could just, it's not a committee announcement, but as we're working through the technical issues of the WebEx side of the meeting, if I could ask, when trustees are not speaking, if you could mute your, your computer and then unmute yourself when you want to speak, it will help with some of the background noise and make the meeting run a little bit more smoothly. So appreciate that.
It's, it's kind of easy to get into that practice if you just keep your arrow over the microphone, but I have received several phone calls and a couple emails as well that it does get a little bit loud in background noise and sometimes makes, makes it difficult to follow or to hear what the person is saying. So any way that we can help the residents that are watching or participating in this meeting, I would greatly appreciate it. So thank you for that recommendation, Administrator Kreckel. Any announcements of forthcoming events of public interest committee or department reports? Then we'll go to citizen input and public appearance, items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings listed on tonight's agenda. Are there anyone that is participating or is there anyone that is participating on the WebEx or within the village hall that would like to come forward for a citizen input or public appearance at this time?
Mr. President, Dennis here. I'd like to acknowledge Steve and Larry being at the Recycle Center on Saturday to make sure that everything worked fine. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you for that, that comment. Anyone else first that's wishing to come forward for citizen input or public appearance? If there is no one, then we can go to the next item, which is consent agenda. Board, a motion to be in order?
Dennis here. I make a motion to accept consent order from A to H.
I'll second that, then. Okay, and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve consent agenda items A through H? Do a roll call vote then, please.
Trustee Myers?
Dennis, yes.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. That then takes us to new business on the agenda. We can start new business with new business item A. Resolution 35-2020, appreciation to the Germantown School District for providing a special poll location for the April 7th, 2020 Presidential Preference Spring Election Polling Location. And for that agenda item, I would like to read the resolution. And it says at the top as the title, "A Resolution Expressing Appreciation to the Germantown School District for Providing a Special Poll Location for the April 7th, 2020 Presidential Preference Spring Election Polling Location. Whereas on March 31st, 2020, Village President Dean Walter issued COVID-19 Emergency Proclamation Number Three, wherein the number and location of polling locations within the... For the April 7th election was modified and whereas the village board of the Village of Germantown approved Resolution Number 30-2020 combining and relocating poll locations for the April 7th, 2020 Spring Election and Presidential Preference Vote ratified in its entirety. And whereas a number of polling locations was reduced because of the COVID-19 pandemic created staffing shortages and social distancing guidelines as whereas the Germantown School District and the village board understood the urgency and overall community need to hold the election at electoral site. And whereas the Germantown High School Field House was the only building large enough to accommodate social distancing guidelines. And whereas Germantown School District allowed the village to use the field house as well as their tables, chairs, and their cleaning supplies. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village board of the Village of Germantown does hereby express great appreciation to the Germantown School Board and district staff for their assistance in successfully holding the April 7th, 2020 Spring Election at the high school field house. And I would also sign that, of course, Village President Dean Walter on this date. And personally would like to add that I do appreciate the ability to have the election there. I appreciate both staffs coming together and coordinating not only the logistics of how to bring people in, how to bring people through, but how to get people out so that there wasn't any cross trafficking. And it was very well marked and very easily understood for all those that I saw when I was there and from the comments that I heard from residents who participated as well. They said likewise that it was very organized and very well done in regards to organizing and setting up the election at the field house. So I would like to personally thank the school district for allowing us that use at this election. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 35-2020.
Motion made and seconded.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Who was the seconded?
Rick Miller.
Thank you.
Looking quickly at the list, do we have anybody that's participating from the school district?
Mr. President, this is Steve Kreckel, the administrator. Just wanted to chime in and I did just send a note to the superintendent that we were going to be doing this tonight. I wasn't sure if they were going to be able to, to make it to the meeting or not, but I did want to reiterate some of the comments that you made that, you know, the election, the circumstances regarding the election were, were very challenging. And the staff at the school, the, the staff from the office who helped with coordinating the effort, the building maintenance staff who were, you know, at the high school who helped out, really stepped up and, and were of great assistance in a difficult situation. And there was never any hesitation and a great willingness to, to do the right thing for the village residents. And just wanted to add those comments before the board takes, takes action.
Yes, did we vote on that resolution?
Um, not yet, not yet.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or any other discussion on that motion to approve?
As clerk, I rarely say anything, but I would like to say I was grateful and humbled by everything that came together so well. Their staff was, was very professional, very helpful. And on both ends, it went very well. Thank you.
And your, your staff as well held it together all the way through. And there were a lot of changes and a lot of things that, a lot of information that came at you within that last couple of weeks. So congratulations on, on a successful election and, and that worked out well when you finally did everything that had to be done to, to put that up and to check it. So congratulations with your staff and with your office as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll do a roll call vote. If there's no other discussion.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Trustee Peeper? Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Trustee Wing? Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item in the new business is item B, Two-Lot Certified Survey Map for David Caprod, agent for the Caprod family LLC, property owner located at West 202, North 102, 46. At this time to give us some more information and background on this new business item, I will turn the meeting over to our Community Development Director, Jeff Reslaw. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Caprod family parcel is located on Lanin Road, just south of Appleton Avenue. It's six and a half acres in size. The zoning is B4 professional office. The two-lot survey map that's been presented divides the property into two parcels. Lot one, a little over four acres in size, would be a vacant parcel available for future development. Lot two, just over two acres in size, would contain an existing, just over 8,000 square foot, commercial office building and parking lot. The proposed CSM does meet the minimum requirements for the B4 professional office zoning district. And as of note, the county highway Lanin Road does require a driveway permit for any new or modified driveway serving the, the new parcel. That is one of the conditions of approval recommended by the Plan Commission. There are three conditions as listed here. We can read through those if necessary. Otherwise, some available for questions. Thank you.
Or?
I'll make a motion to approve the two-lot certified survey map as presented.
Trustee...
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion? Then we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business item C, Fancyer License Clint and Lisa Murray located at North 103, West 150, 22, Wensong Circle East.
Dennis, I make a motion on the new business C.
To approve?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Trustee Bob?
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to approve?
Trustee Miller, did, did we get any, any emails, any dialogue from anyone in that area about the fancyers license here?
No, we did not. They, they did get a sign off by the police department through the background check, but there were not any, any comments sent to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, the people would notify around the family, the licensee?
Yes, but there were no comments that came back.
Very good.
And this was through the last public safety meeting previous to this?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Made and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion to approve? No further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Taking care of that new business item. So the next new business item is item D, Blanket Purchase Order to Entercon for the Material Processing at the Recycling Center in amount not to exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve, it's carried.
Second, Trustee Bob?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to approve?
Again, the only reason the last three are on the agenda is that I personally have a problem with blanket PO approvals.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any other discussion to approve the blanket purchase order to Entercon for the Material Processing at the Recycling Center not to exceed $30,000? I had seen Mr. Zimmerman on earlier. Anything to add? Supervisor Zimmerman?
No, this was discussed at Public Works.
Any discussion?
Okay, thank you. All right, no further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the new business is item E, Blanket Purchase Order to Ferguson Waterworks for the purchase of manhole repair materials in amount not to exceed $25,000.
I make a motion to approve blanket purchase order for Ferguson in amount of $25,000.
Second, carried.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussion? Last time, no discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next item under new business is item F, Blanket Purchase Order to Core and Men for the purchase of HDPE manhole adjusting rings and miscellaneous materials in amount not to exceed $16,000.
I make a motion to approve the blanket purchase order for Core and Men not to exceed $16,000 as presented.
Second, carried.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Again, any discussion on the motion to approve? No discussions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee... Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I made a mistake on a vote on one prior... Prevalence. I should have voted in the excellent instead of forward.
Say that again, on item F, new business?
On item E.
And you voted for it and you wanted to vote against it?
Correct.
Okay. I was kind of wondering about that, Art, but...
Okay.
I was just going to go to the floor with the...
Ferguson Waterworks, I wasn't sure.
I was just going to go to the floor, everybody's side.
That's fine, that's fine. And we'll, we'll correct it for the record. Thank you for, for clarifying, though.
I have it noted, thank you.
All right, then we'll take us to our last new business item G, which is Blanket Purchase Order to Adapter Inc. for the purchase of internal, external manhole chimney seals and extensions to be utilized for the 2020 road projects in an amount not to exceed $20,000.
I make a motion to approve the blanket purchase order to Adapter Inc. in the amount not to exceed $20,000 as presented.
I'll second, Rick Miller.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion to approve? Just for our two newest board members, when we have purchases like this that have been approved from the previous budget year, in the previous budget year for this budget, we had voted on it last September, October, discussed it, and in November, it was voted upon. It is always in an amount of, when we say not to exceed, that is the budgeted amount that was allotted for this material. And in most cases with Mr. Zimmerman on board, this is the normal practice for allotting the purchasing of this materials and it's in a not to exceed. So even though it sounds blanket purchase order, it sounds like it's wide open and is not wide open in regards to the, the total amount that's been already approved by the board for this item. Have we ever done it in a different way, Mr. Zimmerman, to your knowledge?
No.
Is he still on?
I'm still here.
Okay.
We used to just order the material from these suppliers, but finance kind of got a little hard burdened over it because we were exceeding Public Works and village board spending limits doing it that route. So now we ask for a blanket purchase order. It just saves us having to come to committee and board when we're going to exceed those dollar amount expenditures.
So if the additional materials would be needed, you would have to come forward with a budget amendment to, to have the village board approve those additional dollars for that, that item?
Yes, if my line, if my line item did not have a balance, I would have to ask for an amendment, yes.
Okay. And that's just for clarification of, of the new trustees. They will see a few more of these come through, not all like this, but just so you, you know that when it does say blanket, it's not, it's not an open checkbook. There is that, that approved amount that was put aside for the village budget for these items. Any other discussion? No other discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Trustee Kaminsky? Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Takes care of all items on tonight's agenda under new business. It takes care of all items on tonight's agenda. Before we adjourn, I'll just make an announcement that the next regular meeting of the village board will be on Monday, May 4th. board will be on Monday, May fourth at seven PM and it doesn't say at the village hall boardroom, so is that what it's going to be or is it going to be a WebEx similar to what we have here? Cross your fingers and see? Thanks, we'll hope for the best and, uh, it'll be as part of the, uh, uh, public announcement of, of where it'll be held and how it will be held. So, with that then, uh, say goodnight to everybody, thank you all for watching tonight, thank you all for participating, have a good night and be safe. Goodnight.
Goodnight. Take care. Goodnight.